Gentlemen, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call the regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Hudson Common Council to order for Monday, February 8th. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Mayor Burchill.
Here.
District One more set.
Here.
District Two Alms.
Here.
District Three McCormick.
Here.
District Four Weber.
Here.
District Five Hoggett.
Here.
And District Six Hall.
This point in our agenda, we have comments and suggestions from citizens present. I'd like to call on Sergeant Hartman first. Come up and give us a little information on why some of these folks are here tonight. And he's carrying hardware, so that's a good thing. Come on up, guys and gals. Aren't you guys, so you can get in the, there you go.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I am Sergeant Hartman with the Hudson Police Department. And standing before you tonight are some of the fifteen or so explorers that I have in my program at the Hudson Police Department. This year, we participated in the 2016 Explorer Conference, which took place down at the Chula Vista Resort, down in the Dells. And we've been doing this, well, for the, at least for the Wisconsin competition, we've been doing it now, this is our third event. This year, we took first place in two events. The first one was accident investigation. The second one was Officer Down First Aid. And the third event was the President's Award, which was the overall most points in the competition. So we were down there with approximately about 200 others explorers from around the state of Wisconsin, and a group from Illinois who were up with the U.S. Customs and Border Patrol. So that was their first event, and it was nice to see them there. The first-place team that won was Alex Van Summeren, who's one of my captains, Max Berger, who's a lieutenant now, and Dylan Foster, who's not here tonight. They took first place with, that team took first place in both events, which is, which is awesome. We also took first place in one event last year and second place. And when we place first place or second place, we get $300 for first place and $200 for second place. So with the first place, two first place this year, and the first and second place last year, we've got $1,100 in a scholarship fund that the explorers can use to, for education purposes, be it books or tuition reimbursement. So that's in a nutshell, there was, I think I mentioned there was about 200 explorers from all around the state. And I'm very excited, just a little bit about the program. It's a career-oriented program. It's for those youth, that, men and, young men and women that are interested in law enforcement as a career path. So it's a great program for us in that these are some of our, hopefully, future officers. And if they keep doing the job that they're doing with the Explorer Program, I think, I think we're all in good hands for the future, right?
Sergeant Hartman, would you like to have them introduce themselves on mic so that they can get on TV? Not that that's a big deal, but how they can say they've been on TV. If you'd introduce yourself, what year you are in school?
I'm Alex Van Summeren. I'm a sophomore at the University of Northwestern right now.
Okay.
I'm Max Berger. I'm a senior at Hudson High School.
I'm Alberto Franco, and I'm a senior, and also in Hudson High School.
I'm Hunter Asherberger, and I'm a junior at Hudson High School.
I'm Sidney Glampy, and I'm a sophomore at Hudson High School.
I'm Joseph Norris, and I'm a junior at the Hudson High School.
I'm Doug Peterson, and I'm a freshman at Somerset High School.
I am Jake Dixon, and I am a sophomore in Hudson High School.
Sergeant Hartman and explorers, nice job, and we're really proud of you here in Hudson. And thank you for all the hard work that you do. Sergeant Hartman, good job.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to the council on any
item that is not on the agenda? If you could give us your name and address, please.
Certainly. My name is Jim Thomas, and I reside at 1140 Riverside Drive North in Hudson, Wisconsin. And I just wanted to take a couple of moments and express to the board a little bit of what has been going on with the dam removal project at Little Falls. And first of all, I just want to say, I'm a little apologetic. I just got back from Mexico and sort of scrambled. And realistically, as I look back, I probably should have been doing this every month just to keep everybody abreast of what's been going on. So my reason for being here tonight is going to be specific. I won't go over what has transpired with the dam to this point, but everybody is aware that it has been breached, and that right now, Little Falls Lake is drained down, and it's basically a stream. The issue that we have is that there has been a United States Geological Survey Water Testing Station just south of the Little Falls Dam for many, many years. It monitors water flow, nutrients, phosphorus, any toxins, anything that's in the water. And it's solar-powered, and it will take water samples at random, or you can run it from anywhere in the world. The funding ran out for this, unfortunately, at the same time the dam disassembly project started, September 30th of 2015. We've been trying to work with the DNR to get this funding back online, and at this point, we are just a little bit short of what we need. It costs about $32,000 annually to operate this facility. The DNR will pay for one-half of that, $16,000. The USGS will pay for $8,000, which leaves $8,000 remaining. What my mission is going to be over this next month is to try to secure that. I'm Vice President of the Lake Malaloo Property Owners Association. We can write out a check for $2,000, and our hopes are that we can get the City of Hudson, the Town of Hudson, and the Village of North Hudson to all participate in adding $2,000 each to get our $8,000 to keep this operational. The reason for this, just very briefly, the, the quality of the water right now in Lake Malaloo, the Willa River, contrary to what had been hoped, that it would not be impaired, there are a lot of suspended and heavy silt pockets. You can no longer get a kayak up the Willa River at this point, at least before it froze over. Without this facility being able to monitor what's going on and be able to target how much sediment is coming in and what can potentially be done with it in the future, if Lake Malaloo becomes impaired and is a non-navigable waterway, it's ultimately going to have a dramatic effect on property values, which ultimately will have an effect on taxes and revenue to the three municipalities of Hudson, North Hudson, and the Town of Hudson.
Jim, two minutes.
Okay. So with this, this was originally supposed to be on the agenda for tonight, but I'm going to request, if I can, to speak in front of the finance, or at least talk to, request of you to look into participating with the other two municipalities to keep this facility open. And questions?
We can't.
You can't do questions?
Oh, you can't do questions?
Not tonight.
Okay. So I know that's brief. I hope it covers the basis of what we're looking for.
We'll see you next week, or two weeks from today with.
All right. Sounds great. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Jane. Anyone else? Excuse me. Again, I'll ask one more time, is there anyone else who would like to address the council on any item that is not on the agenda for tonight? Okay. Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda items for approval: to approve the regular session meeting minutes of January 25th, 2016; to approve claims for payment in the amount of $600,451.89. A detailed description is available in the Clerk's office on request, and it's posted on the city's website. To approve contingent on payment of any outstanding debt owed to the city and successful completion of background check, approve the issuance of regular operator license for the period February 9th, 2016 to June 30th, 2017, for Jack Paltier. To approve the extension to the timely startup ordinance requirement for Mallory's until May 31st, 2016. To approve the continuation of the conditional use permit for the Seasonal Garden Center as proposed by Plant Place Incorporated with the same general time period and with signage to be approved by the Community Development Director. To approve Myra Smith to be appointed as an election inspector. If approved by council, her term would be effective from February 9th, 2016 through December 31st, 2017, with the additional consideration that she may also serve as a special registration deputy or special voting deputy as needed for election-related duties at the qualifying community-based residential facilities after training has been successfully completed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
More set?
Yes.
Hoggett?
Yes.
Burch, or Alms?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
And Hall?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next item is discussion, possible action on final plat of Heritage Cottage's subdivision first addition, nine single-family lots, and dedication of Promise Boulevard Right-of-Way Creative Home Construction LLC. Mr. Donald.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The planning commission recommendation is to approve the final plat, Heritage Greens subdivision first, first addition. The condition, uh, conditions, recommendation, the conditions of approval of this plat is that a letter of credit or acceptable surety, which can be a performance bond, to be provided by this, to the City of Hudson for, recommendation is 125% by states, there's new provision, state statutes, as we can only limit that to 120% of the estimated cost, the street curb gutter, sidewalk, utility improvements, and cost of city inspections. This plat is to be recorded before improvements are constructed and accepted by the City of Hudson. Second condition, approval of construction documents and plans of specification by the city staff. There's a lot of correspondence going back and forth between the project engineer and city staff Friday and today, so we're probably about 95% on the way of getting those plans and specifications approved. Last would be execution development agreement with the City of Hudson. This plat is essentially the last phase of Heritage Greens planned residential development in regards to the traditional single-family homes. Again, provide for only nine single-family lots. And then Promise Avenue would be extended between Promenade and Heritage, Heritage Boulevard.
Okay. A move for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Bill. Discussion. I think this is the second time we've had this, or...
Just a matter of clarification that surety would be 120% versus 125%.
Is that okay with Randy and Bill?
Mm-hmm.
Questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Discussion, possible action on the application of a conditional use permit, planned residential development, preliminary master plan, 145 single-family residences, Carmichael Ridge north of Cooley Road and west of Carmichael Road, M.I. Homes. Look out, Jerry, you might get hit there.
General provision for a planned residential development is for a preliminary master plan to be approved. Essentially, that preliminary master plan is the efforts of the developer, city staff, planning commission, discussing issues, basically move the project forward where the developer knows that the general concept's acceptable to the City of Hudson. Then after adoption of the preliminary master plan by the common council, the developer has 180 days to bring in their final master plan and also their preliminary plat. The preliminary plat is basically the meats and bones of the plating, plating the entire residential area, but then after that, final plats could be submitted with phasing considerations. This preliminary master plan includes 145 residential lots. There'd be access to Carmichael Drive just north of Culvers, between Culvers and the clubhouse, former golf course clubhouse area. Second access point would be on Cooley Road between Family Fresh and Applebee's. And the third point of access would be, this is the parcel of the City of Hudson, recently purchased, this would be the extension of Ward Avenue. This is Plaza 94 over here. The fourth access would be a road that goes north, behind the clubhouse, north into the future City of Hudson, if it's the next in the, in the future. Again, 140, there's two phases of developments being proposed. Phase one would be the northern portion in this area. That'd be done basically in 2016. And then a second phase would be the southern part, including access to Cooley Road, that'd be done in 2017. Now please understand, probably in 2016, there'll only be about 12 residential homes built in this area, so you're not talking about high traffic in 2016. So that's a reason, there was some discussion where to require phase two to be, at least this portion of the street, to be built in 2016 or not, but the planning commission did not require that as a condition of approval. The conditions of approval are, are quite numerous. I don't know if you want me to rene-
I think you should.
-renummerate each one of those. Again, the first five or six basically are generic to almost all master plans that, planned residential developments have been done in the City of Hudson. The first condition would be the final master plan shall be consistent with the preliminary master plan dated 12/15/2015 shall be approved within 180 days of the preliminary master plan approval by the common council. Second is revised, updated stormwater modeling must be presented by February 15th, 2016 for city staff and city consultant review and approval. Reason we want that, because stormwater's a critical portion of this particular development. Third, final landscape plan should be submitted for approval of the area along the west property line between the proposed Carmichael Ridge project and budding Cudges Golf Circle. Fourth, grading plans, preliminary plat, street utility, street lighting, pathway, trail construction plans, final plat, which may be presented in phases, and development agreement approvals. Private covenants, homeowners association, bylaws shall be provided. Amendments, any amendments to the preliminary, or as it go on the final, any significant amendments have to be re-reviewed by the City of Hudson, and it may, we may require a new public hearing for those particular amendments, depending on how significant they are. The sanitary, and now getting in a little more detail on specifics, sanitary sewer and water mains provide water main looping from the end of proposed F Street to the west of Stone Pine. This would be in this cul-de-sac up, so we have a looping of the water system. And also, the water system would be looped from here to here, again, providing directional flows, two ways in those water systems. Pathway trails for access to sanitary sewer and storm structures, ponds, all stormwater ponds and storm sewer, and sanitary manholes shall be accessible by path trails with new construction by the developer, Hunshtigan Homes, M.I. Homes. Again, will not be reusing the golf path cart because they're older, they're not, really won't hold up to, to maintenance vehicles, so those will be reconstructed, and they're shown in orange. But each path will come up to a manhole so we can get our vacuum truck, other maintenance equipment into those manholes. Path trail sections shall be minimum nine feet wide, three inch with two minutes and eight inch base. Areas near manholes shall be designed to allow the vacuum truck to position the front of the truck up to the manhole, and turnarounds also provided. Pathways trails used for access to the trunk storm sewer and sanitary sewer systems should also be accessible to the general public for recreational use will be maintained by the City of Hudson. Easements shall be provided to the City of Hudson. Again, there's some discussion, there should be a park, what the general discussion was to do the pathway system, combine it with the maintenance, but then turn it over so it can be used for recreational purposes. Pathways trails for recreational use, pathways trails along proposed Street A, which is this, and then Street B, which is this area. Other locations such as residential areas should be maintained by the budding property or the homeowners association. Access to and from Carmichael Road and access to and from Cooley Road, interim the street section before the full intersection of Carmichael Road is developed, and final street sections, alignments and access shall be finalized for approval by the City of Hudson for the proposed Street A, which is this area in here. And including the intersection, proposed Street B to the north and proposed access E to the south, which is this area, this, and that future, and access to the future commercial area, which is down here. That would be a single lane modern roundabout, being preferred intersection design, preferred inters, design section for the street between Carmichael Road and intersection shall be two westbound lanes and, and four eastbound lanes, two left turns, one straight, one right turn. Access to Cooley Road does not warrant, with the proposed amount of residential development that requires signalization at the intersection of proposed Street A and Cooley Road, which is, again, between Family Fresh and, and Applebee's. The residential development itself doesn't warrant a signal, however, depending on the final agreement between the City of Hudson and Hanson Brothers on the commercial development, what our biggest concern is they put a heavy traffic generator on this end of this, then that may warrant. So as we go through that process, we'll have to reevaluate where the signalizations warranted Extension of Ward Avenue, part of the agreement, City of Hudson, Hanson Brothers, extension of Ward Avenue from proposed Street A, westerly to existing right-of-way of Ward Avenue shall be constructed, accepted by the City of Hudson on or before October 15th, 2017. Again, remember, there's a financial incentive that we're holding there, we're holding the cost of construction on that roadway, so it's really their incentive to build it as quickly as possible if they want to get paid that amount for their lot, so incentives on them to get it done as quickly as possible. Private well abandonment, the private irrigation wells shall be abandoned, appropriate records filed, Hudson Water Utility pursuant to Municipal Code Section 242.9 and Wisconsin Administrative Code NR 2812.26. That well is, it's right in this area, that was used for the irrigation of the golf course, and that needs to be abandoned so we don't get any contamination into the groundwater.
Questions for Mr. Donald? There's, we've put a lot of time, Danny's put a lot of time, and planning commission's looked at it. It's, again, this is preliminary.
It's the preliminary master plan, again, all the detail, we're looking at this 180-day period that's coming up, if, again, it's approved tonight by the common council to really work out the details of the final master plan and the preliminary plat. I don't know if there's anybody in the audience tonight that may want to comment.
Danny, I have a question on the proposed roundabout and entrance into the Culver business up there. Why do we have that leg off so far, so long to Carmichael? Can't be shortened so they can get a left turn in?
No, not really, Randy. I mean, when, when I first talked with, with Culvers representatives, they were okay with a roundabout. One is, one concern is having stacking. Once that ultimate design is, you're going to have cars, you're going to have commercial development, you're going to have residential development. As cars go out to Carmichael, there'll be stacking. And if you have that access too close to Carmichael Road, they're not going to be all the maneuvering in and out, not that they'll never stack back that far, but the idea is to get it back as far as possible, also by moving it to the west as they come around the roundabout and into their development, that that access will be closer to get in. There'll be a right-in only, right-out only.
And there were no concerns about their traffic flow, not being able to take a left into the restaurant, as it is now?
Well, they'll have a left in on an interim basis until we decide that has to be taken out, and then the median put in. So during the initial construction, they'll still have pretty much the access they have now. But at some point, we're going to have to change that, because when we build a roundabout and build a median, then that's when the access will be, they'll have to modify.
But if some, if something was to change, we could ultimately, we could tweak it if...
If our traffic consultants felt that it is something that could be worked and, and be safe, the answer is yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I've got a question. It says, "Final landscape plans to be submitted for the area along the west property line." What does that include, and how wide of a section is that?
Well, it's essentially... From this area down to this area, this entire area, excuse me, this entire area along, this, basically, this, this, these will be holding, holding ponds, this will be a berm. There'll be berms in here. But there's been a preliminary landscape plan, it's just a matter of putting it into final, final form, but size of trees, I think, where there's concerns expressed. I know John Rass of Hunshtigan Homes went to the neighborhood, say that they're 100% pleased. You know, I'm not going to make that comment, but I think it was really a, a pretty certain effort by Hunshtigan Homes to try to get landscaping in here. I mean, you also have to realize that this development wants to look nice, too. I mean, it's not, it's not that we're going to screen the development altogether, because it's just not practical, but how do you make that transition look nice? So, you know, there's some grove, a tree stands up in this area, you know, they're going to try to preserve as many as they possibly can within, within reason.
So then that land, who will that land belong to?
Belong to homeowners. Basically, the homeowners association for this development will do the maintenance. And essentially, if trees are lost, they'll be, you know, and that'll be in the bylaws and so forth. So that's something we have discussed.
So, Danny? It would appear that the, the cart trails paths that are back there will, will be gone, or?
Well, from a public standpoint, they won't be utilized. I guess where they want to take the old cart paths out or not, that, you know, they may want to do that because of the liability issues to the homeowners association. But the only areas that's going to be public trails are the ones in orange.
Right.
And those are, again, are going to be combined trails. They'll serve both the city's maintenance of the trunk sanitary sewer and storm sewer mains, and then the ponds, but they'll serve as a dual purpose.
Will the final plan have, tell us what they, what they intend to do with those trails?
Pardon?
The, the trails that are not, that are still going to belong to the association?
We'll get that clarified, yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the plan? You know, we've hopefully given everyone an opportunity to give their input. There's another chance. John, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I think...
No, I think you did a good job of giving an overview.
Again, we'll have the final, if this is approved tonight, we will have the final come back within, what, a hundred and eighty days, is that the?
Well, I suspect it'll be more than five commission meetings.
Oh, yes. Sir?
Related to the orange trails there, you mentioned that the city people can get in there, but they'll also be open for people going for a walk or something?
Correct, they'll be open to the public, general public. Well, I'm commenting, if you want, the plant, our plant residential development may have private trails, these will not be private trails, these will be public, open to the public and maintained by the City of Hudson.
I'll move, we approve the condition of use permanent preliminary master plan for the Carmichael Ridge Plan Residential Development, and then under staff recommendations or in committee recommendations, along with that motion.
Is there a second?
Second, that?
Discussion, any more discussion or questions?
Yeah, I, I have one, the, early on, there was, and I can't quite read it on the map here, discussion about connecting over to Grandview with the trail. Is that still?
You know, what Jim's referring, you know, what Jim is referring to, trail to come and show here and then be connected, one of, one of new plans I just received would connect here, I, I guess, got to be approved by the Stone Hines Association. But the second one that Jim's referring to, this is the city parcel, if you recall, there was a, some stormwater damage as part of the structure back in this area, and we developed a gravel maintenance roadway to get back, and when we developed that, one of our conceptual ideas was to utilize that as a dual purpose, one for maintenance, again, to the stormwater system, but could also be used for trails, which would connect this point over and have built it all the way to Grandview. So that's, but this would be more of a city responsibility than it would be the development.
Okay. Any other questions? Got a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next item on the agenda is Public Works Committee Discussion and Possible Action on Vine Street Reconstruction Project. Where did I skip? Oh, I'm sorry. First one's off. Discussion Possible Action on EMS Operations Supervisor Chief.
I think all you guys were here for finance, is there any additional questions that weren't addressed at that meeting?
Basically, this is a full-time operations supervisor and a recommendation from Finance and from EMS is to promote, or to hire Josh Olson for this position.
I'll move for approval.
Sir? Okay, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you, chief. Now we'll go into Public Works Discussion Possible Action on Vine Street Reconstruction Project. Mr. Sifko, is he here?
Good evening. Thought what I'd do tonight is just a little bit of the history of the project up to getting us to this last fall, and then a little bit more information on some of the meetings that have been held in the last month or two. Basically, the project started back in 2010 with a downtown flood improvement study, identified about five or six areas that were flooding risks, some were locust, some were alleys off of Vine Street, again, four or five areas along the corridor with flooding problems. Two years later, in 2012, a feasibility study was commissioned by council, it was prepared by FOTH, that looked at Vine Street itself due to street deterioration and some other issues. That study was again looked at this past summer and fall by our current engineer, Bolton Mank. The 2015 Vine Street Study, again, incorporated the suggestions from the flood study and the suggestions from the previous 2012 study. And that, that report was approved by council this last fall, and basically, you can see the roadway section that was in the previous reports and the roadway section that was approved by council is shown here.
When was that approved, Tom, in December?
No, it was in early October.
Okay.
As far as the feasibility study. I believe at that same meeting, the council also authorized preparation of final plans and specifications, and the final plans and specifications are again, as the typical section you see here. Where we are right now is within a couple of weeks of completion on those plans and specifications. We're planning on coming back to the next council meeting and have the council authorize an advertisement for bid. We would like to put the ad in the following week, and we're looking at trying to bid this in about three or four weeks from that ad, so it would be ad last week of February, bids last week of March. That's the, the schedule that was also in the previous feasibility study. We had a public informational meeting on January sixth. We invited pretty much all the residents abutting the project. We had about thirty to thirty-five residents show up at that meeting. We listened to some concerns, questions, many topics were brought up, traffic volumes, street width, typical section, which is what you see here, some concerns about speed, accident history, talked a little bit, some concerns on crosswalks and stop signs, some on-street parking was discussed, bike lanes, bicycle traffic, and a couple other, those were pretty much a lot of the, the concerns that were brought up at that public informational meeting. Since then, to put our responses together, we sat down, had numerous meetings in-house with staff, brought in Public Works, Community Development, talked to the police chief, talked to the fire chief, consulting engineers that both Short Elliott Hendrickson and Bolton Mank were advised to address those concerns. We brought those concerns back to a Public Works Committee meeting at that meeting, which was January twenty-sixth. That same meeting, we tried to address those concerns that the public had previously brought up. We had that, that, again, I had that meeting on the twenty-sixth. For the most part, I believe we at least had a response for most of the concerns. At that time, it seemed like most of the discussion landed on whether we include bikeways or, let me rephrase that, whether we have bikeways or whether we have parking. Again, the current situation out there now, there's parking along the north curb. What you see in this typical section reflects that. The discussion at the end of the meeting focused on possibly changing this typical section to one that would have bike lanes on both sides in lieu of parking on one side. That was January twenty-sixth. The Public Works Committee then scheduled a special follow-up meeting on February fourth to discuss the same topic. At that meeting, there was a, a motion from the previous meeting was rescinded, and the second motion that you see in your packet came out of that February fourth meeting. So at this point, I guess, that's kind of the history of where we are, where we are in the current project, and relative to any direction by council for change, I guess I would turn it over now to the Public Works Committee, seeing how there was, was not consensus about what a change might be. So again, I'll turn it over to the Public Works Committee, and if anyone has any further questions, I, I'll do my best.
John, you want to go through that recommendation?
Yeah.
I'm, I don't want to say I'm confused by it, but we're going to move parking to the south side?
I think I can eliminate some of the confusion of, as to the contemplation to begin with. I don't believe, and when we voted on the, that configuration, I didn't realize that we had already chosen either parking or not parking.
Yep.
So, and then after that, it became pretty evident that a fair amount of the people that live on Vine Street had inkled that they don't want parking. So regardless of what the future solution will be or how it currently is, the desire was to, okay, we've got a little bit of time, not a ton, let's sit down and try to come up with a prevailing solution that would make everybody happier, happier than we currently were with that particular solution. So I had, at the end of that January twenty-sixth meeting, made a motion to put bark, bike lanes from Fourth to Ninth Street eliminating parking, and then somehow people get routed off of there, like if you put a faraway stop back in, which I'm sure is not very popular. And as Tom Sifko pointed out, that my plan was flawed in the fact that the bike lane would run right in the back of parked cars, so that seemed like a bad idea. And through that meeting, went through a number of things, and other things that came up was a detour that at one point, we all kind of thought maybe the interstate was going to go right down Vine Street, but that is not the case also. So we kind of debunked, hopefully, a lot of those myths, and then got to a point where I said, you know what, I'm going to rescind my motion, and Jim had decided, he had something a little bit more, taking out my problem of running in the back of parked cars on the north side of the street and coming up with something slightly different. Regardless, we kind of thought that, up until this point, that the no parking with bike lanes scenario seemed like a better solution for that roadway. Now, again, we took a lot of feedback from the crowd on Seventh Street and, but make no mistake, we just said, let's just vote, get it back to council here, so we get everyone's opinion, because I know Randy and Bill and Joyce have not had a time to reiterate, or you as well, so I think we were just trying to come up with a solution that we thought would make it just a little bit better than what we had decided on before, because we didn't really know that we had decided on that, so that's how we got here. I don't know, Jim, if you want to further clarify your position on your motion.
Well, we, after this, the meeting we had, I went out and, and walked the streets, I mean, I've driven by it, kept looking at it, but I walked the streets to see exactly what kind of issues my suggestions might create, and I would have to say that I do not believe we really can't move parking to the south side between Fourth and Third. The, the main, we just lose, we lose half the parking, and it's, it's just not going to work very well. So that piece is out. The main piece of it being from Ninth to Fourth, no parking with bike lanes, I think is, is, it really works well, and there are a number of solutions for moving bike traffic on down. We really, in my mind, and some of us, we think we, we want to move traffic from, from, be able to move it from Carmichael down to First Street. There's a lot of things that go on between those streets, we have destinations all along those streets, so we can easily handle the lower part of it, but the part from Fourth to Third to Second, there are some other solutions that are available that we need to look at seriously, and we may need some, some really bicycle expert help. We've been, a number of people have been gathering information and trying to provide input, but there are some solutions that we need to examine a little bit further, but have nothing, in my mind, will have no effect on the construction project that can move ahead. And so I think that the main piece that I would be looking for here is that we look at bike lanes from Fourth to Ninth or Ninth to Fourth, in them at Fourth Street, and then use some of the big city approaches to handling bike traffic at that point. You're never going to be able to get families down, my mind, down the rest of that street from there, it's just, it's too busy and it's too narrow, so we're going to have to recognize that not everybody is going to be able to get all the way down there, but that we can get a lot of people down there much more safely into this today.
So the, the final thing, and I'll certainly one other people, as you will, to talk about it, but the one actually strange notion I did have, which was you could actually widen Third Street, Vine Street between Third and Fourth to forty-three feet, so that the bike lane could keep going and there would be separate parking available. And when they talked about cost, the cost actually isn't that bad because as, when Tom and I talked about it, that there's just not, it's still curb and gutter, you've still got to do it, there's a little bit of dirt, so it actually is a...
It's about somewhere around fifteen to seventeen thousand dollars.
Okay. So our goal was just to take that, you know, conversation further, so that's kind of where we ended up. The traffic engineer that you had said you wanted to divert, is that what you're talking about, Jim, from getting to Fourth Street and divert the bike traffic to like Orange Street?
No.
No?
Not, that's not in...
What do you, what do you?
I don't see that as an option, because then you have to cross Second Street at an uncontrolled intersection.
So you would still keep them on Vine?
It's a possibility later on, but there, again, that's part of the study. You can do things like controlled bike lights, where they can actually, when they come to the, a family comes to the intersection, they push a light, and those, those strobe lights go on and they can safely cross. We may, that might not be a bad option anyway, but we need to study how we get across, really how we manage pedestrian bike traffic downtown.
But at this point, you're comfortable with moving the project forward and introducing your, your, your motions or whatever you're trying to configure here, right?
Right.
You're comfortable with moving the project?
Ninth to Fourth, we're solid with, and I think we'll have to find the solutions from, from Fourth to First, they're out there.
And I think that's fair, but I don't want to slow the, the project down because of the residents flooding issues that are on the, you know, between Fifth, Fourth.
Absolutely, no, I, we, I don't think we have any concern with, with, we will not slow the project down, that's, that's been our driver.
I think one of the other things from my perspective is, have we done a good enough job with the folks on Vine Street about the parking issue? I think I brought that up at one of the meetings, that, you know, I know people don't own the property in their street, but I know I feel I own the place in front of my street where people park, but I think we really need to get their input, the people on Vine Street, to say, we're okay with that, you know, not that everybody's going to agree and we have to make that decision, but I think we need their input, because it's good to say, yeah, they all agree or none of them agree. I think we ought to find that out. I think that's, should be part of the process without slowing down our program. The other, just a comment, it's less than a half a mile, folks, that we're talking about from Ninth to Fourth, so let's not get too hung up on, you know, it's less than a half a mile, I clocked it coming down here tonight, so we're not talking about a, you know, twelve mile bike path here, it's, it's less than a half a mile.
All right, we're talking about paint.
Yep.
Is what we're talking about.
Absolutely, it's not, it's not a huge investment we're talking about. We've all agreed on the width.
The only thing that would change the scope would be to widen it to forty-three feet.
On Third Street.
Forty-three feet, yeah, from that one block. That was the only thing that would change the scope.
So do you think we can go back and, and let's, let's have another open meeting, make sure we notify all the residents on Vine Street about the park, the proposed parking ban?
We could do a survey, we could just...
I think it'd be a good thing. I think they should have a right to have their input. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, anybody have any other thoughts or comments on it?
We're committed to thirty-six inches wide, thirty-six feet wide from Ninth down to First.
Okay. Anyone else? Bill, anything?
Do you want to change the section between Third and Fourth tonight?
Go ahead, Tom.
Well, maybe I could throw, again, this is what's currently in the plans and specs. We know, we do not need a motion of any kind from the council, we need nothing, and then we're going along this schedule. If the council wants to change this, then we need a motion to change. At this point, we don't need a motion, I'm not sure what, how that works with a public works recommendation that's on, from the last meeting, but from the council, we do not need any motion or recommendation unless you want to change the current marching orders.
I would like, I would like to go back to Public Works and say, let's talk to the residents on Vine Street, do a survey, and take a look at the Third and Fourth Street, or between Third and Second Street, Third and Fourth Street, about that widening and see, get a, you know, estimate about seventeen thousand, and come back with a recommendation that, yeah, we've... and come back with a recommendation that, yeah, we've talked to our folks at, on Vine Street, and we have 55% that want it, or 20 that want it, or 80%, so that we can make a decision on it.
Okay.
Because it's, as Jim said, it's paint, right, at this point?
Right.
We're not talking about significant, are we, Tom, significant dollar difference?
It's pavement markings and signage that would go hand in hand with this design. It's a little bit different pavement marking and signage that go with the other one. From a practical standpoint on a project this size, they're close to a wash. I didn't count 15 signs or 18 with the other one, but it's basically the signage for no parking versus the signage for a bikeway, and then striping is different.
And we've had the bonding issue, we've, we're moving in the right direction for that?
Sean will be here at the next council meeting to bring preliminary information back to the council. There'll be a preliminary resolution to have them go ahead and start the process of issuing bonds for that project.
And I also had a letter from Tim Ramberg, the Highway Commissioner for St. Croix County, and the city has been granted a MSIP award of $16,269. So maybe that's the cost to make that wider there.
Oh, there you go. Sounds like the perfect number.
So if anybody has a problem with that, let's...
The only thing I would say is that we've had a lot of meetings and a lot of input, and the, at the later meetings, we had pretty, we were getting good support for no parking on there. For the people who were coming to the meetings, saying, the parking's gone, and put bike lanes there. Because there is an issue, concern about speed. And that is one thing that the lanes do. If you widen it, it goes faster. If you narrow it with paint, it goes slower.
Well, Jim, we did at Public Safety address safe, the speed and possible signage. So we are taking that issue up as well.
Okay.
You know, my only concern, Jim, is I just want to have one more, because if you went to one meeting...
Oh, no, I agree, let's do it. But I just want to say, we, this is not a motion out there
No.
that we don't feel we have significant support for.
All right, okay. Everybody okay with that?
Sure.
Okay, let's move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Can you say something from the general public?
Sure. Come on up and give us your name and number. We're more than happy to get the input.
Mayor, council members, clerk, thank you for hearing me. Pastor Scott Jorgensen, First Baptist Church, 311 Vine Street. And I appreciate the comments and what was discussed here tonight. A parking change on Vine and 3rd is, impacts hundreds of individuals weekly. So I appreciate the Public Works Committee addressing the Sunday issue, but for information, Sunday morning is one of our light mornings, well, eight days of the week. Wednesday night, we are the only church in Hudson now, serving free community meals every Wednesday night. So every Wednesday night, we have typically 75 individuals there. We have Thursday worship, Sunday worship, Sunday evening worship, summers, weddings and special events, most Saturdays. So it's not just a Sunday morning issue. On behalf of Edward Jones, our neighbor, their clients use that parking on 3rd every day of the week. The Allen O House, our neighbors to the south, they use parking along 3rd and Vine, between 3rd and 4th, every day of the week. I appreciate the desire to protect the bikers. Speaking to the general idea of having a bike avenue route down Vine Street, I'd really encourage the council to look at a bigger, broader plan than that. To encourage bikers to use the most heaviest used traffic lane in Hudson, I think is a mistake. Let's look at the big picture. How do we want to get the bikers from the river out to Carmichael, right? That's really the issue, yeah. Creating a corridor from 4th to 9th is really short sighted. So just on behalf of the area residents that utilize that area, you know, let's take this into consideration, and I wouldn't put the bike lane in there from 4th to 9th. It's just, like you said, it's a short section, it doesn't address the issue of getting bikes from Carmichael down to the river. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. And again, when we have our committee meeting, please, please attend. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Diane Wetstein, 719 Vine Street. We were at the Public Works meeting, the January 6 meeting, the January 26 meeting. There's a lot of us here that live on the 4th to 9th, and none of us park our cars out there ever, because it's dangerous. We are concerned about speeding, and we have, so the bike lanes, actually, we really don't care. We don't, we don't park our cars there, our guests don't park there. The bike lanes with the, with the paint and that type of thing could be a traffic slowing, calming type thing. We do agree, it's kind of a bike path to nowhere, though, 4th to 9th, or 9th to 4th. But we're concerned about having parking there, and just random people parking, because then we have sight lines that are affected. There was just an accident on 9th and Vine on Sunday, right? Kind of after this other meeting, where can't see coming up that hill, and then they collided about, it was about 11 o'clock on Sunday, and that's not even a high-traffic day. We're concerned too, 7th and Vine, you know, there are sight lines with cars parking. So we're actually in favor, from that 4th to 9th, of banning the parking. We only have it only a few months of the year anyway, because right now, this time of year, we can't park out there anyway. The only people that park out there basically are 4th of July, the Booster Days Parade, and the fireworks, and they all come from outside of Hudson. It's not us that's parking there. And so the bike lanes actually would maybe perhaps slow down some of the speeding that we see on our street, and give us the sight line. So that's kind of where Jim was saying, that's kind of is where we left it, that we agreed to that. But, but, right, we need the parking down there by the church, and all the businesses down there, and that is an issue coming down, and then all of a sudden, eh, the bike lanes. So, you know, that has to be spoken for. But just wanted to let you know, though, us there up on 4th and 9th, we're okay with the no parking.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I'm Mark Garrity, 328 Vine Street is our business. And Pastor, I am right next door to the Allenon House, and I'm in favor of what's being proposed. I think if it isn't a matter of expanding to the north, if anyone has ridden in Madison on a bicycle, or other cities, specifically cities that welcome bicyclists, Sparta, Elroy, et cetera, that it's very common to have the dedicated painted bike lane with the parking lane. It's in Minneapolis, and St. Paul also. Once people get used to it, it's, it works, and works very well. Don't forget the business on the corner of 4th and Vine Street to the east. You have two businesses that are in there, and so I know they have their own parking lot, but there is parking seasonally on that corner also. So Stewart's and Hairstylist, and also the Valley Heating, so they're there. But it's a matter of if we can put along Vine Street, similar to what's in River Falls, with the LED flashing lights, they come up to the corner at 7th Street, for instance, with the flashing lights, same thing up on 9th, where it's dedicated, or even at 4th Street, when on the, you've got a school guard that's there two times a day during the school year at 4th and Vine now, and Johnny does a great job out there. But it's a matter of, the cars do speed through there. So if there is a way of slowing it down, that would be great. But from a standpoint of, you don't have to call me for a survey, that I'm in favor of the, of widening it out, if we go a little bit wider, and we'll be able to get the cars in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone else? Mr. Bauer?
Jerry Bauer, I live on Iverson Circle, up the hill, and driving down here, I'm a bicycle rider and a driver here in Hudson. Driving down here, I did pass a couple cars that were parked, and it always makes me a little bit nervous going down the hill with those cars right there along the side of the road. I've also ridden my bicycle down and up the hill, and the traffic makes it pretty difficult now. So just getting the current plan from 9th down to 4th gets you down the hill, and helps you get up the hill, and that would be a wonderful thing to get done. I'd like to see it go further, but, you know, there's a lot of other people that, in this lower area, evidently, that I have to be considered too. But just to let you know what I think, I think it would be best to take it all the way down to...
Thank you, Jerry. Anyone else? Yes?
Marion Weber, 604 Grand Avenue. I, I like this idea too, because I think that we can work on it in the future. But as far as 4th to 2nd Street, you've got a stop sign on 3rd Street, and you've got a stoplight on 2nd Street. And there is such a thing as stoplights that have bicycle crossing signals on them. And I think that would go a long way getting people across 2nd Street. There are ways to mark the road, as I think most of you probably already know, that that make the drivers and the bicyclists very aware that they're sharing the road. So it, I think it's, I don't think there's a perfect answer to this question, but I think that what we can do is to make bicycling as safe as possible for everyone along Vine Street. I don't think it's going to be perfect. We just make the best of what we have, and make it safer.
Thank you, Marion. Anyone else? Okay, I think we got it. Einer?
I'll only take a couple seconds. Einer Hansen, 716 Vine Street. There's probably 8, 10 people from 4th to 9th Street, who are residents, who are here tonight. And I think we all are in support of what Diane said, in terms of there being bike lanes as opposed to parking. So I just briefly wanted to support her on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Einer. Okay, anyone else?
I'm Doug Wetstein, husband of boy Diane. I just want to make a couple points. It's already used as a bike pathway. I mean, we, we live there, we see them, they're coming down Vine Street, up and down, on weekends, especially quite a few skateboarders even. So it's always, I always cringe, because some of these people are moving very fast. So, so keep that in mind. It's already being heavily used for, with bikes. The second point that my wife made about the sight lines, trying to make left turns on to Vine from 8th and 7th is difficult, especially with parked cars. And at 8th Street, you just go for it, and hope no one's coming over that hill fast. That's it.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to ask again. Is there anyone else? Good. Thank you all for coming tonight, and we'll move on, if that's... Suits everyone. Next business, next item is unfinished business. It's discussion and possible action regarding ordinance 1-16, creation of Article 2 of Section 207 of the municipal code regarding composting.
You did have first reading on this last meeting. You should ask Kathy and make a couple changes.
Yeah, and I made those changes. Denny reviewed them, and Chief Jensen reviewed them to, and I basically followed what the council did when it went into the chicken coop ordinance, letting, allowing them on the, one in, properties that have one and two family dwellings, in any residentially zoned area in the city. So that's basically what the ordinance does right now.
I'll move, I'll move we approve ordinance 1-16.
Is there a second?
Second.
Go ahead, suspend the rule.
No.
No, we add first reading, yeah.
Knock it off, Jim.
I apologize, I'll just be quiet over here.
All right. Discussion, is there any...
Yeah, I'd just, yeah, I'd just like to point out that the genesis of this ordinance was two residents, Sue Dahl and Phyllis Jaworski. If they hadn't taken the impetus to get this going, I don't think we would be talking about it. So they get, they deserve a hats off, I think, for this.
Okay. Any other comments, questions, concerns? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next item is discussion and possible action on the Hudson area joint library funding issues. I believe, Joyce, you requested that?
Yes.
In the last council meeting?
Well, I attended a meeting of the Library Committee for the county, and they discussed a compromise with the reimbursing the libraries. And so I've invited Roy to fill us in on that compromise, and ask him to speak.
Compromise on what?
Let him, I'll let him talk about it, but reimbursing the libraries for the rural circulation, or for the money that they're no longer getting.
Mr. Shoban?
Yeah, thank you. I have a very short handout for all of you representatives here.
It's all right? Thank you.
Well, thanks for, Joyce, for inviting me to speak on behalf of the County Library Planning Committee. And personally, I've been trying to find a solution to this concern that's been going on ever since the Hudson Joint Library made a decision to terminate the funding arrangement, which it had agreed to a couple years ago. But before I get into that, I'm just going to make a short statement here, that, you know, I've been a longtime resident of Hudson, moved here in 1988, and have always been, and so has my wife and my children, a staunch supporter of the value of public libraries to the ideals of democracy, and fair access to information, and the promotion of literacy for all. And in that regard, I first wanted to commend the City Council for its recent increase in funding that helped us reopen our doors on Monday. That was a big deal. Bravo. You showed true leadership when you proceeded without waiting for or requiring the other joint municipalities to participate, because it is, after all, our only municipal-supported library. But I come here tonight as the County Library Planning Committee member to propose a compromise that could permit the Joint Library to avoid the still pending partial reallocation of the county's funding, that is otherwise certainly going to occur on March 1st of 2016. The County Library Planning Committee is responsible for assuring that all libraries in the county are funded fairly and equitably. And so when the Joint Library decided in late 2013 to reneg on the promise that Mr. Jim O'Connor, the president of the Hudson Library, decided in late 2002 to the St. Croix County Finance Committee, which at that time was headed by well-respected Buck Malik...
Can you, Roy?
Yeah.
Could you get to what the compromise is? We don't need to go through the history again, and again, and again. So I would encourage you to get to what the compromise is. This is not, go ahead.
Well, as you know, Mayor Burchill, this stirred up a lot of controversy.
Without a doubt.
And it's caused harm to the reputation of the Hudson Area Joint Library and its forefunding municipalities. So outside of this room, there's lots of discussion about what has happened. And then, out of respect for our local council here, I understand that we cannot directly control what the Hudson Joint Library does. So part of the solution that I have in mind will take care of that. So what is the compromise proposal? If the Joint Library will agree to pay 70%, not the fully promised 100% of the library service fees it promised to forward to its neighbors, then the county will, on March 1st, pay 100% of the library service fees that the county can pay to the Hudson Library. So Hudson pays 70%, the county pays 100%. What does that mean in dollars and cents? Well, the Joint Library would pay its service fees owed to its neighbors of $34,751. That's at the 70% rate. That's at the 70% rate instead of $49,645, which would have been at the 100% rate had it not changed its mind on paying its neighbors. So this is a savings of $15,000. That's part of the compromise, $15,000. The county will then pay the Hudson Library $77,352, which is 100%. So there's no downturn in the funding to the Hudson Library. That's the compromise and that's a payment instead of what we're prepared to pay, which is the $54,146. So this is a savings to our library of $23,200. There's no legitimate reason for the joint library board to refuse this deal other than a complaint that its budget is too tight. Because now, even at the $34,000, we can support that and that's where you all come in. So on March 1st, the county is set to reapportion the Hudson Library's funding by $23,000. So that's the difference between the $100,000 and the $70,000. That's now dedicated to go to the other libraries. So here is what I need from this council. And I need to take this back to the County Library Planning Committee meeting, which is scheduled for this Friday, February 12th. Then I'll take it to the County Administration Committee meeting scheduled for Wednesday, February 17th. We need, the people of Hudson need this council to adopt a resolution tonight that will guarantee funding in 2016 of the $34,751 reimbursement payment promised by the joint library. You can ask your joint partners to contribute, but just like your action to reopen the Hudson Library on Mondays, this council needs to take a leadership role again and make this pledge to the county. In wrapping up, when the joint library meets this month to consider this promise, they can follow your lead and pledge their acceptance and willingness to reinstate their promised reimbursements at the 70% reimbursement rate, or they can refuse. If the Hudson Joint Library refuses, then this fair compromise will be considered to be rejected. But with your financial support and leadership, however, I do not see how the Hudson Joint Library can rashly refuse this compromise proposal. I stand ready to answer your questions.
Could you just clarify the figures? Is 70% if they do not, if they go the 70% for the county?
Yes.
The library will get $54,146, correct?
Yes.
If they go 100%, then it's a $77,32 less than the net to the library?
Right.
So that's $42,000. So in effect, the library's getting $12,000 less?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure that...
That's why it would be a hardship on the library.
Okay.
Well, I'm somewhat disappointed, Mr. Schober. I feel like you're bullying us. And if you don't have an answer to us tonight for Friday's meeting, you guys are, you know, you're not doing your job. I find that, you know, totally unacceptable. We've, this board has, Mr. Weber has brought forth a increase of $40,000 and now you want us to spend less money on the library. You want us to take money away from the library of $12,000.
No.
Yes, that's what would happen, Roy.
That's if you don't...
Roy? Roy? If we do the funding, as you said, we lose $12,000 for our library.
Not really.
Well, yeah, it does.
70%, we get 54.
Do the math.
If we do the planning, you get 42.
You bring in $34,000 to the library, we pay the full 70%.
Right.
100%, we pay the $77,000.
Right, right. But that's a net of 42 on their budget, on the library's budget.
Right.
Because they're bringing in 77, they're paying out 34.
What's going to happen right now if nothing happens tonight?
Then we get, then as my understanding, you said the library would get 70%, which is $54,000.
That's right.
Okay.
So the library, the net to the library is a $12,000 decrease for money available for the library.
Except enter in your $34,000 from the city.
So you're... You're not that the library paid the $34,000, that the city paid the $34,000.
That's correct.
So you want us to take taxpayer money?
Yes, I do.
And send to other libraries?
No, send it to our library. I could have you send it to the other libraries, but that wouldn't be right.
Same thing.
No, it's not. No, you can't control what the library does. But we can provide funding. That's all we can do to our library.
So we've increased our library funding this year by 17%, higher than any other department in the city. And you want another $34,000?
I need another $34,000.
You need another $34,000.
The county does.
So the county's, it wasn't too long ago I was at a county board meeting where county board was talking about land use issues, about the state taking control of the land use. And I feel this, and that county's going to lose it and the state's going to do it. And there was a resolution passed by the county board saying, that's not the right thing to do, having the state come in and do it. This is exactly the same thing.
You think?
Let me finish. You're coming to our council meeting and telling us how we should run our library. And I don't think that's correct.
No, I'm representing the county and saying, here's how the counties...
You're also a representative of the six, of this district where the library sits and you want us to spend, take more money from the library. We want to have $12,000 less for the library to spend than we have right now.
That's a twisted look at it. The correct look at it is, I would like $34,000 more coming from this. This is the, this is the main funding source for our library.
We just gave 40,000, we gave another 40 in addition to our 5% and you want more?
That wasn't enough. If the Hudson Library Board isn't going to provide the funding to its neighbors, last year it kept $55,000 that it owed to its neighbors.
Roy, when will there ever be enough for you?
That's a fair question, isn't it?
Yeah, it is.
What do you mean, when will there ever be enough?
When will there ever be enough for the library for you?
Well, let's look at the River Falls Library, maybe. Let's look at a basic level of support.
I'm asking you, just tell me, when is it going to end? You're coming here asking us.
Okay, if we pay at our state required level, that's where we would be. So something to get us to a basic level of support.
What's the number?
It's probably around $400,000.
More money. Or 400 total for the city.
It's a state standard. We're well below par on our state standard. When I go talking, I know you're all friends with each other here, but when I go talking to people in my constituency, they're all very supportive of the library. You heard them just now. They want a good library.
Who doesn't?
Finally opened it up on Mondays.
Yep.
And we had to beg for that.
You didn't beg for it. Mr. Weber brought it in and we voted for it. I think it was a, no, I think there was one person against it.
That was good. No, it was two people against it.
There were two of us against it.
Okay, I'm sorry. Maybe there was two. But it passed, so...
I think, if I could say something, what Roy was speaking to was the state funding level. And this is one of the things I talked about when we raised, increased our funding level, is that the state level, the average per capita is $36. Our average is 23. Now, for Hudson itself, it's probably up to around, you know, around 26. And with this, we'd be at 29. So the county average is 30 per capita for all the libraries. So it's, we are regrettably way below, and I know we've been increasing it every year, every budget that we've been increasing the funding to the library. So it's a...
You know, if I can just have one more comment. I was on the library board when the library was purchased and I was a member of this particular board and I was the representative. And the city council at that time voted unanimously to buy that building. And we put out, we put a big dollar amount into that library and supportive of the library. And I think it was a good move to buy that library for our, for our community. And part of the deal, when we talk about deals, was that for three years, that library was not going to ask for any increase in operating expenses. That was a handshake deal. Wasn't the first year, Mr. Schober shows up at city council saying, we need more money. And again, I'll go back to what Tom said. There's just, you know, we have, every department in the city wants more money. And I think we've been generous with the library. I just don't think it makes, you know, my personal belief is we've been generous. Let's, let's hear from the library, president of the library association, see what he thinks about it. I mean, I think that's, that's fair, isn't it?
Absolutely.
Mr. O'Connor, would you be willing to speak? I know you didn't have anything planned, but you're the president of the library and is our library, is Tina here tonight? No? Yeah, is she here tonight?
Tina, no.
No.
Rich, I would invite you up here to speak, of course, and speak to the amount of funding we're getting compared to state standards, please.
I appreciate your invitation, Roy.
So where would you like to begin?
Well, you know, you heard it tonight. Obviously, as president of the library, you take as much money as you can get, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. We, you know, look, everybody here supports the library. I presume everybody here supports the library. Everybody on the library board supports the library and has worked very hard, very diligently to make this library work. And... We could get into history, but I guess that probably doesn't belong here. Look, the bottom line is, from our perspective on the library board, we were told that it had been determined that the original agreement that Mr. O'Connor, and obviously, well, maybe not obviously, but no relation and no reflection on Jim, he had a great vision and did a great job in putting together the joint library. Unfortunately, Jim did not have any standing whatsoever to make this agreement. And they could, he could represent the library board if it existed at the time, but it didn't. There was no joint library board that he could represent where he could make that kind of deal. But when the library, joint library was formed and he was on the board, the board at that point in time could definitely make the decision that if they wanted to spend the money that way, that they could do that. But they could not bind future library boards to make those same payments. Period.
If you're going to give out incorrect information...
Just, Mr. Schober, let him speak. Okay, you're out of order. Mr. Schober, would you please sit down?
That's fine. That's fine. And I don't disagree with that, Roy. That was his pledge.
He was the president of the joint library.
Roy, do you understand that no one can bind a unit of government to make those payments into the future? They can't do that, Roy. And you, sitting as a county...
Supervisor.
Supervisor. I come from the environment where they're commissioners, sorry. Know that those agreements are only good for as long as the people that made them are in office or on boards. You know, let me, let me put it to you this way. What about, what, we just got done talking about Stone Pine here, didn't we? There was a 10-year contract. Wasn't there a 10-year contract that they were going to have golf there? And this council decided after five years to start discussions with the owner to terminate that contract and enter an agreement that's going to be very lucrative to him.
Two parties can agree.
We're talking about a group of people that were trustees for the contract. What about the people that entered into that contract? They weren't represented here.
Which contract do you speak of?
I'm talking about Hans Hagen, first of all. So I'm talking about units of government have, they, they make agreements that they undo. That's what they do. They do that constantly. Jim O'Connor was not a unit of government at the time. He had no standing, and you know that, he had no standing to commit future boards...
He was the president of the joint library board. When the town of St. Joseph was added to the joint library in 2004.
What does that have to do with whether that was a legally binding agreement or not? Roy, you wanted to sue us. Is that right? You wanted to sue us. Did you not?
I'm contemplating it.
Well, you told us, you came to us and told us that you wanted to sue us. Is that right?
If the legal...
Is that right?
If the legal case could be made.
And could it?
We chose another path.
You came back to us and told us that you, there was no legal choice that you could make. There was no legal remedy. And you told us this, you told us this at our board meeting that there, because there was no legally binding contract, that there was no legal recourse. Which is, yes, you did. Which is exactly why you are taking the course you are right now with the county board to try to reduce our funding.
All right. I think, hold it, I think it's kind of gotten off course here. I'm sorry that that has happened, but...
Can I make a comment?
Well, certainly.
Mr.?
Hang on a second. Mr. O'Connor?
Just let me make a comment. We went over this several meetings ago as to the agreement, the provision in the joint powers agreement between the participating municipalities. In that agreement, there was the provision whereby those, the library board would make those payments to the other libraries. And if you recall at that, the agreement also included a provision allowing the participating municipalities to amend their agreement by voting to amend it, which they did. When we last went over the legal basis for that provision, I gave the advice that, and I still agree with that advice, that the municipalities can, under state statute, cannot tell a library board how to spend the portion of money allocated or appropriated to the library. That is within the exclusive authority of the joint library board. So that provision was probably a nullity to begin with because it was inconsistent with state statute. The municipalities were attempting to tell the joint library board how to spend the money allocated to that board. Mr. O'Connor is correct in that Jim O'Connor, at the time, could not bind anyone, one person, just like any mayor, the council members individually cannot bind the council to any sort of agreement. It's got to be the, the body itself. So that, I mean, it's really irrelevant what Mr. O'Connor said because the agreement ultimately did include that provision and that's never been disputed. But the problem is, the provision itself was legally invalid. So we don't, in my view, we don't need to plow through that ground again. My advice is that was inconsistent with state statute. It was appropriately removed from the joint powers agreement because of that reason. I would also just, on what Mr. Schober is requesting tonight, say two things. He asked for a resolution. Resolutions must be presented to the council in writing before the council acts on them. And I would just, as a, as a recommendation, say, this is a fairly complicated proposal and to have received nothing in writing and asking for something to be, a resolution to be adopted is inconsistent with your rules and also puts the council in a difficult position. Typically, these types of things are presented in writing. Secondly, any such decision, I believe, would require a budget amendment, which again needs to be in writing and be on the agenda and so forth. So just procedurally, in my view, it's an impossibility.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, finish what I was about, was going to say until I was interrupted. I can't speak for the board as a whole. We've been down this road before. The decision we made had to do with our fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers of the city of Hudson, the people whom we serve. Period. We have to do what is right by them. What is right by them is to spend their tax dollars on their library and their library alone. I would think that, given as many times as we have said that, reiterated that at the board, that I don't think that if this resolution were to come back to us, that we would do anything different than what we've done because we have that obligation to our taxpayers. Period.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, what would you like to do?
Well, the reason I supported Jim's increase in funding of $40,000 back during the budget amendment, and as Jim pointed out, we are, and this is a fact, woefully under state average of funding our library. So how much is too much? I don't know. State average might not be a bad idea. However, you got to start somewhere and you can't bite it off all in one chunk. And I thought, you know, this is a great idea. Let's get open on Monday and get rolling. And I think part of the, the issue of the rural recirculation fee was, hey, if we're open on Monday... if we're open on Monday, how much recirculation is really going to be necessary because people won't be going to other libraries, they'll be going to this library here. And I did, in fact, state that I realized that there had been issues prior to the previous agreements and, but at this point, given what we have, we were going to be able to at least get going on part of the deal. And that next budget cycle, we would have an opportunity to potentially do more or not, or stay the same. However, we didn't really know what the impact would be of our opening on Mondays. So I hope you can appreciate that we were trying to at least get going further towards what Jim was hoping for, is to raise our average and take a responsible look at increasing funding without jumping with both feet. From my standpoint, whatever, you know, the county's got to do what the county's got to do, and, you know, it sounds like we needed a submitted resolution anyway, but I, I think I'm still in favor of what we did. And will we lobby for funding in the future? Absolutely. But I think we're where we are, where we are.
Let me just make one comment. I received an email from, I think it was Tina, I think maybe Richard forwarded to me, of a, a program that they're working on at the library. We should be excited about what's going on over there. I mean, she is doing a bang-up job, that's why I was kind of hoping she was here tonight. She's doing a bang-up job, and it's the first time in I don't know how long that the Hudson Joint, the library, plus the foundation, plus the friends of the library, are all working together instead of fighting with each other. I think there's great opportunities there for more funding coming into our library. And you know there's nothing wrong with a joint public-private sector financing of our library. If we can improve our library, that's a good thing, it's not necessarily a bad thing. If we can get money from the private sector to help our library operate, that's great. But I just, I'm excited. Let's see how our, our library is doing. I think it's made good progress, and I agree with you, John, I think it's, we'll see what the impact is. We won't have, if we're open on Monday, if you looked at some of the volumes from Mondays, that's not necessarily the day when they're going to that library. I think, that'd probably be a true statement, wouldn't it, Roy? I mean, they're, they're using it other days also. The River Falls Library, our folks in our joint library, so. Anything else? Anybody have anything else on this?
I have a question on a legal standpoint for the forty thousand to open on Mondays. From a legal standpoint, can we allocate, I mean, can we, will the library always stay open for, because we can't direct them for-
No, the library board is by statute, has exclusive control over the monies allocated to the library. That's, that's something the city has set up, that's by state statute.
So we could have given them the forty thousand, and they could have chosen to not open.
Yes. But, I mean, having said that, the council chooses whether to allocate money. And so, you know, there's a-
Got you. Thank you.
Cooperation there.
Anything else on this issue? Okay, let's move on. New business, discussion of possible action on resolution two dash sixteen, preliminary resolution regarding street improvement project on Vine.
This is essentially to get the ball rolling, to all of the, you know, the plans and specs are going to be started, and this allows us to start processing special assessments, getting them out to the property owners, having the public hearing. So this is just the first step in the process. This is standard for every street construction project. We do that, we do special assessments.
And we're not changing our special assessment for this project.
Okay. Right. And the, the, you know, pay schedule on there is what is currently in the policies, so.
So we're following our policy. Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Roll call.
Morsat?
Yes.
Hoggett?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Motion to approve by someone?
Also moved.
Okay, is there a second? Jim, second.
Okay.
Any discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Discussion of possible action on ordinance three dash sixteen, amendment to the two thousand sixteen appropriation ordinance.
These are two relatively small budget changes. I would ask that we establish a small budget to start for the Ward Avenue building that we just purchased, so we can pay the utilities and that type of thing. And then after distant future, we'll be having a meeting with the EMS, the fire, police, all the people involved to figure out a plan of attack, how much it's going to cost to do what needs to be done. But this will allow us to pay the utility bills and that type of thing. The second is a correction. An amount was put in for the city-owned parking lots of fifteen hundred dollars, and it should have been fifteen thousand. We found that out when we went to put the bill in, and, so that's just a clerical correction. So those are the two. Were required by any changes to the budget that increased the budget, any of the budgets, we have to bring back to you as an ordinance, so.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Roll call.
Morsat?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Hoggett?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
And McCormick?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is, I have an appointment. Andy Hassan is going to be the new person on the Public Utilities Commission as John, Josh Bernard has resigned, and I think he moved out of the city. So this gentleman lives on six twenty-seven Locust, so we have a replacement.
He needs, this needs to be approved.
It does need to be approved. I thought, okay.
Yeah. I'm moved to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council members, future agenda items. Okay, I have some things here for, from the mayor. We've got, we've got to get moving on our buildings that we purchased for our EMS and fire, so we can get those things sorted out. We'll try and get something going on from finance, maybe next, next week, we'll try and do some getting together. Again, we've got to establish some sort of a, a cost estimate on what we're going to do here. And again, we got to-
Is there any chance we can go up and-
Sure.
-look at those buildings sometime?
Yep, absolutely.
Tom, Tom has, Tom Zully has the keys and stuff, so.
Okay. Let's, let's, we'll do that. We'll set up a time.
And be nice to see with a plan, you know, actually in the building.
Then on February twenty-third, meet and greet for the Wisconsin History Tour at our library from February twenty-third through the twenty-seventh. We've got a whole program through the twenty-sixth, so it's really a neat program to the Wisconsin Historical Society. So take a look at the, I'll, I'll send this around, but lots of good stuff going on at our library. So again, another positive thing that's, that's going on there.
I'll see if I can find a link and put it on the website.
Yeah, I think it's really-
We all received that.
Yeah. Did you all get it?
Yeah.
Good.
At least I did. You did?
I got it, yeah.
So.
Then a couple other things.